And we'll start off with the call to order. Nan, would you call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson. Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Mark.
And I also call to order this meeting, joint meeting of the Craven County Board of Education with our Craven County Board of Commissioners. With Dr. Doyle, please conduct a roll call.
Good morning Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of both boards. Chairman David Hale.
Here.
Vice Chairman Francis Berry.
Here.
Virtual Smith.
Here.
Stephanie King.
Here.
Kimberly Smith.
Here.
Brian McCray. Mr. Carl Ippart. Chair, we have six members present and one absent on the call.
Thank you. Okay. I'd like to have approval of the agenda by the Commissioners. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Agenda is approved. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to this land of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice And now I invite our Board Attorney, Mr. Brian Gatchel, who conduct the invocation for this joint meeting. Board members and Commissioners, will you please pray with me? Loving God, Father of us all, we thank you for giving us another day. In the ebb and flow of American politics, the nation now enters the final months of a quadrennial campaign for the highest office in our republic and our similarly important local ones. Send your spirit among your people that during this stretch, the best of ourselves as American citizens might emerge, and that the darker angels of our community be discouraged, even silenced, by a spirit of goodwill, patience, and intelligent discernment. Hear your people as we put our trust in you. Continue to bless those who labor to attend to the sick among our citizens, and those who also strive to find effective treatments and vaccines. Keep us all safe in your divine mercy. May all that is done be for your greater honor and glory. Amen. And I'd also like to address my board, and I require a motion to approve the agenda as posted, as it is not amendable. Is there a motion?
I saw a move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. I believe we have it. Opposed? Our agenda is approved. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to welcome both boards here this morning. I would ask that, because we're, in most cases, people wearing masks, that you speak up. We have some people that might not be able to hear unless you do, so if you could speak up loudly and clearly. Just to go back and refresh our minds, Commissioner Liner, Vice Chairman Jason Jones, and myself had a meeting with the Board of Education on August 6th concerning in-class from training and volunteer virtual. That is approximately, at this point, almost two months ago, seven and a half weeks. At that time, the Chairman and I have written letters back and forth to each other, I believe one was on the 27th, and we re-idiated that we were still after the school board doing something about in-class training and volunteer virtual. We're at the point that at now, the Governor has said that we can go to option A. Some of the surrounding schools have already gone from option B to option A. We have not entertained option B at this point. I believe in, your date is October the 19th, the Governor's date was October the 5th. I would just like to read a letter that I got in the mail, in fact, all the Commissioners got this letter, but I think it kind of sums up the way most of the Commissioners feel. And I just want to read it for a moment. Dear Commissioners, it is my understanding that you'll be attending a joint meeting on Tuesday with the Craven County Board of Education to discuss return to school plans. I'm aware that on September 17th, the Craven County Board of Education voted seven to zero in favor of returning to school under Plan B. As you prepare for this joint meeting, I ask that each of you consider why Craven County is lagging behind our neighboring counties. There are many counties around us that have been operating under Plan B since the beginning of the school, or at least for the past several weeks. Those counties are now making plans to transition to Plan A. While the Board of Education has voted to move to Plan B, that doesn't even start until October the 19th, and they, they didn't even discuss a when we might transition to Plan A. I ask that the request and explanation of the Board of Education on how and when they plan to reopen our schools, our children are paying a mighty price for their delay, and I personally haven't had a satisfactory explanation for that delay. Now, I think that basically is the feeling of the Commissioners of this board, many of the Commissioners. The only thing I would like to bring up right now is, I read an article where 600,000 of our kindergarten children will not be going to kindergarten this year. And pretty much kindergarten is an important part of a child's education, in that that's where they learn the fundamentals of school, they learn the academic part of school, they learn the social part of school. And in my opinion, I feel sorry for these children because they will be going to the first grade with kind of being left behind, and I think that that explains part of the problem that we have. With that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner, Chairman Hale, to his opening remarks.
And thank you. Chairman Mark, Vice Chairman Jones, Commissioners, Madam Javite, good morning to all. A few years ago, we met in joint session, I believe right here, in this building, perhaps upstairs, and we shared lunch, we addressed challenges and working together, and we did that. We worked together to overcome the impacts of hurricanes and floods. We take pride in those successes and our relationships, but never did we envision a pandemic, a pandemic that has had devastating impacts on our community, our state, our nation, and our world. And we come together again as we address the challenges of returning to school to in-person instruction. Together, we will move forward as we return to our schools. I know Dr. Doyle will address those challenges and the necessary steps to return. I wish to also take the opportunity to recognize and thank all who have worked tirelessly during the all-virtual phase, and they, you, as I speak to you, have us ready to move forward to be a blended in-person and virtual. I'd like to recognize those who have helped us to move forward, certainly our leadership and our faculty and our staff, but I also want to recognize those behind the scenes. School nutrition and transportation, as they have prepared and delivered thousands of meals each week since this began in March. Our facilities and custodial staff preparing a safe environment for our return, that is an ongoing project and continues. And our nurses, as they develop safe and healthy protocols for us to follow. I do not forget our parents, students, and community partners who all strive to accommodate the demands of virtual learning. We thank you. As I read our vision, which is next, that statement, I want you to realize that we all continue to have a role to move forward. If you're new to the area or joining us for the first time, a few words about the Craven County Schools' vision. We did not write this, you did. I see Commissioners who joined us in developing this vision, our Visioning Working Group. They were elected officials, civic leaders, but most importantly, students, teachers, active and retired counselors, pastors, parents, business leaders, and community partners. They were the voice, you wrote the vision, we adopted it. It is our vision and why we serve. I'd also like to do just a little house cleaning. We have ground rules, I would ask the board that we adopt the ground rules, that we observe and model each of our board meetings. I look forward to having respectful conversation and dialogue. I would also encourage, if you have your phones with you, would you please put them on silent or off? With that, Chairman Mark, I return this to you.
Okay. I am going to open it up to each one of our Commissioners, and for them to make comment, and I'll start with Commissioner Booker.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the board for those of you who are able to be here today. I'm disappointed that three members weren't able to be here. The fact that we went to 100% online learning, very disappointing. A lot of, a lot of parents, a lot of parents have contacted us and asked for their, our help to see what we can do to get things going and get the kids back in school, particularly heard from a number of parents who had handicapped children, who were really struggling with the, with the lack of face-to-face learning. So my first comment is going to be that there are some good things that came out of this. Number one, private schools have started, and started on time, they've gone now for a number of weeks, and from what I'm told, they've had no, no major problems. They're jam-packed, their enrollment is up, and I suspect that that enrollment will continue to be up once these kids are offered the opportunity to come back full-time to public schools. I think a lot of parents have already learned that they like what their kids are getting at private school, even though they have to pay taxes for public schools and tuition for private schools. That's my first point. The second good thing is, that parents are getting a view of what's going on in the classroom by being at home, if they're able to be at home, if they're not working, and watching what their kids are learning and how they're being taught. Homeschooling is up dramatically, I'm told, and I believe will continue to be up dramatically in the future as a result of the decision to go to total online learning. The third, the third benefit of the decision to go with 100% online learning is that we have an election coming up in a few weeks. Unfortunately, when people go to the ballot, to the, to the, to look at their ballot and they go into the booth to make their decision, or if they vote online, or not online, but by mail, I think about the only races that are not partisan are the Board of Education races. The judges now have a partisan race, so you can look and see if you prefer to vote for a Republican or a Democrat, you can see which is which. That has not been the case, and is not the case. I have had amazing number of people say to me, who should I vote for on the Board of Education? Who are my candidates? And I think in the past, most people, and I'm guilty, have gone to vote and haven't done their homework regarding the Board of Education. That's changed this election. People are now doing their homework, and if they're not happy with what this board has been doing, I suspect we're going to see a turnover as a result. So that's, that's a good thing. My second comment is, what this has done for me has caused me to say, when budget time comes up next spring, good Lord willing, and I'm still sitting here, I'm going to be paying attention to what the Board of Education is asking for. I must confess that I haven't done that in the past. Not that I don't trust our county manager to, to be diligent, because I do, but I want to know what we're spending and why we're spending it, and I'm going to be paying attention next year. So that's the second benefit. My third is a question, and that is, why has our turnover in our school system been higher than some of the surrounding counties? Two teachers that used to teach in our system contacted me as a result of hearing about this meeting, they now teach in an adjoining school district, and they say they had to leave, and they're very happy in the adjoining school system with the leadership of the schools that they're in, and they, one lady actually said to me, I left because I wanted to get my kids into school, and I was not comfortable with my kids in Craven County schools. That's quite an indictment. That's just one person, she may have other problems, I don't want to get into that, but that's what she said. So my question is, why are we losing teachers to adjoining school systems? I had a discussion with the sheriff the other day, and he has hired five deputies from an adjoining county who were unhappy with the leadership in their county, and in all five cases, they took a pay cut to come in to work for him. So the leadership of the county that these deputies came from was apparently lacking enough that they were willing to change employment. I don't ask for an answer today, but I certainly don't understand why we would lose teachers who live in Craven County, that they would drive to an adjoining county because they're unhappy with their employment here. That's a question that I think needs to get answered at some point. Thank you.
Commissioner Liner.
I can't hear. I believe what he said was he'd like to hear from the Board of Education before he announces what he wants to say.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I can barely hear you on your mic. Could we make sure that our IT people are recording enough so that the general public who is listening can hear what's being said, because if it's mumbling to us, I don't want it to be mumbling to our citizens.
Okay.
I'd like to reserve my comments and questions while I'm here with the Board of Education on going into B, what the action is, going into A, what the dates are, if I want to make a reservation.
Commissioner McCabe.
Good morning, everyone. Also, I'd like to piggyback on what Commissioner Booker said. A lot of people, in my community also, spoke about Board of Education, and that some of them are not doing a good job, a lot of teachers are leaving the county. And also, I got a lot of complaints about internet in my district. There are a lot of kids that have internet, and it's hard for them to understand what's going on, and a lot of those kids have to go to some of the fire departments, or either to have, community, have a library to get internet. And in my district, we have, we've got three fire departments, and we used to have internet down there, but I was told that the Board of Education took the internet out, and they have no access to internet. So as of now, Commissioner, I'm working on getting internet in the Adam Creek area where there's no internet at all for the kids to get, do their homework. So I have got a lot of complaints, I haven't told all of them yet, but I'm at George, I'm going to wait until I hear more comments from the board and see what's going on. Thank you.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can, can everyone hear me? Yes. Okay. Okay, good, thank you. Number one, I appreciate everyone for taking time to put this joint meeting together, and I want to congratulate the Board of Education, the school leadership, and the teachers and the staff who did a 180-degree shift back in March when we first went to the COVID lockdown to make sure that we were able to finish out last year's school year as best we could with going to online learning, hotspots, meals being delivered. It was an outstanding effort, and I'm glad that we had the summer to look at how to, how to do education in Craven County longer term during the COVID crisis. But like many of the other Commissioners, I have heard letter after letter, phone call after phone call, from my constituents in New Bern, Trent Woods, and Riverbend, and part of the county, who are extremely dissatisfied with the online learning in this school year. Last year, everyone understood and I think applauded the effort. This year, they have been grossly dissatisfied with Plan C and online learning. And while they are happy with the transition to, to Plan B, they are concerned that it is taking so long, and they are concerned about what's next. And I'd like to echo some of the comments I have received by letter and by phone call and by email. Now, first is ET's comments, okay? This is a multi-threat scenario. It is not just COVID, it is not just hospitals being overwhelmed, it is also the threat to our educational system, our kids. Small children not learning reading, writing, and arithmetic, they never catch up. Middle school and high school, who are in college and work preparation, may never launch. Exceptional children are suffering, I think, across all disciplines, education, social skills, adaptation. Not all parents can, and let's be honest, not all parents will supervise their children with it. I ask working parents when I meet them, what are you doing? And many of them say, I can't do it. I can't take my children to school, I don't have the access to internet, I can't do it. Possibly 15% of our students in this county do not have access to broadband or internet. And while we've patched together a system, it is a patchwork, and it's not working for many families and many children. Taking your kids to work does not work for most working parents. All right, that's just, it's a great idea, it has not worked well in practice. What about the economic impact? I can't go to work, I can't get paid, and I can't pay my rent or my mortgage. Right now, evictions are on hold, but when that comes off, people who can't earn a salary are going to be hurting. The economic devastation has been awful. Concerned about parents paying twice, okay, for, for their pods, for their neighborhood systems hiring a tutor for classes in Excel, the skating rink, the Y, the flame, private schools. And I'm also concerned about the long-term impact on public education, okay? My mother, my grandmother, various aunts were teachers. I believe in public education as something that knits our communities and our citizens together. I don't want our citizens to decide that our public school system and our teachers are not essential, because I think they are. But the longer parents and our citizens do without our teachers and our classrooms and our public schools, I think the more they are going to doubt, do we really need a public school system the way ours is set up in this country? Five years from now, I don't want people saying, do we really need these many teachers, these many disciplines, this big school system? And I'm afraid that can happen the longer this goes on. So I wasn't elected to run the education system, I was elected to represent broad concerns by my constituents. Do I agree with some of these? Yes, I do. But the main thing is, I want people from the Board of Education to hear what I am hearing, and their concerns, and what they really want to know is, okay, how are we going to address this going forward? And they need some guidance and answers. So thank you.
Commissioner Sampson.
I'd just like to say, oh, that's, that's a good thing to talk.
Commissioner Sampson. No, you can do the microphone.
John, take a few more peewees. I've been just sitting here listening at the problem we seem to be having, and I've been having these problems, and have not just started, they've been problems for me for a long, long time. Now, I live close by two hours' schools, there's a Duff Field School and a school over in Sunnyside. Both of these schools is very likely, they need a lot of work down there, they need more material to work with. We need to really think about this, a lot of kids go to those schools, a lot of kids need a lot of help. A lot of kids are in the poverty area that go to that school. And I, I noticed this, J.T. Barber has been down a long time when the storm came, not only the storm, before the storm came, it was just, might as well say, not a second-grade school, but a third-grade school. And they need a lot of work down over there, there's no doubt about it, and also need a lot of work down over in Sunnyside area. Because these are poor communities, seem like they don't get the best school. I remember when they built this new school down, up about Millway, I forget the name, right, right by, about the Millway of, of Chair Point. I remember when we first went in that school, it was a nice school. But I've been looking at schools over there in the Spanier area, over there in the Duff Field area, and over there in the Sunnyside area. Those schools have been lacking a lot of attention for a long, long time, and we need, we need a lot of help over there. And this is what we might call a poverty area, and now they're in a bus in here, it has anything to do with the poverty area, but we can transfer some of our funds to the poverty area, then to see this area is about to die, this area is about to die. And I'm very, very, very concerned. And I'm very, very, very concerned. And I'm concerned about how some of the teachers act toward these students. I, I was a student myself at one time. I remember going to school, and I can remember that the kids, that the parents was in pretty good shape, they fed pretty, pretty good. But the turn that the parents didn't have much, they fed bad. And I wasn't sure the parents didn't have much. And I'm, I'm very, very concerned about these kids. I'd rather see kids going to school than see kids going to jail. And that seemed like the last option for the black kids, this parents that don't have a decent job, they ends up in our jails. And we ends up spending more money in the jail than we do in the school. We, we all in this together. We supposed to be all one. We need to be treated like all one. You don't need to pick off, pick the best off top and give the rest to the bottom. And I'm very concerned about this issue. And also about the schools over, over there. I, I have no secret about how I feel about schools going open up. I know how bad this disease is. I can, I, I can remember in the Bible way to say, when you see, when you see the blood pass over, people become so disobedient, you wouldn't, wouldn't listen. And the death angel came through. And I can think about the death angel coming through our society now, because we have not been obedient. We are in this thing together. And we don't need to consider ourselves no better than others, because God loves us all at the same rate. He would love the bad ones that really do what he does to good ones. And we have to be concerned about one another. We have to listen to each other. All, we can't run this Bible self, we have to run it together. And I know it's a lot of times we getting out of little corners and we try to make plans of what we gonna do for our community, and how we gonna dress our community up, but never think about that community over there on the other side. And that's why I've been out here working so long. And I'll be continuing to work and make my decision to help the people who really need help. People who really is on the bottom, try to bring them up, not to the top, but they in the middle somewhere, so they can go for themselves. If you can get on, if you're down and can't get up, you need some help. Some of you might not been down, but I've been down, but I got some help to get up. And I'm willing to give my help to others that down and can't get up. That's all I have.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Hale, Board of Education, good morning to you. I appreciate you taking the opportunity today to meet with our board. It's 10:30, so I'm not gonna go into a lot of questions I have. I, I think I would do as Commissioner Liner said, because I think a presentation is therefore today to be able to hear. But I do have a lot of questions that have been addressed to me by citizens from the rural part of this county. And they're, I know they're not, they're questions that also that Reverend Boomer's probably gotten from the same constituents. We represent the same area, Ms. King and myself, we kinda go over into the same areas also. Internet, internet, internet. I went to the store this morning to have my normal little gathering with the community, and that was the hot topic when I walked in this morning, internet. The statement's been made, well, Jason, that was something the Board of Commissioners should have done and taken care of years ago. Well, first off, you know, we, we all will say that we're behind on our times, we know that. Nobody expected what we're going through in 2020 here, across the state, across this nation, but especially rural counties. Having said that, we as county government, we cannot offer the service to individual citizens. We can help provide infrastructure, but we legally cannot provide that. We're, we would, I don't know where we'd like to, but it would be easy, we think sometimes, if we could. But having said that, our county staff, we have been working tirelessly. I, I will say, we've got staff that's been designated and doing nothing else but looking at how can we take and provide internet coverage to the remote areas of our county, whether it's Harlow, whether it's Dover, Cove City, or whether it's even in Epworth, in the areas along 118 that I hear a lot about, Ms. King. But there is no easy solution, and there is no solution that will come about any time soon. Having said that, there are a lot of challenges that face virtual learning and what we're experiencing. But internet is at the top of the list. It is at the top of the list. And as I said today, I've got a list of questions that folks have asked me to present. When the presentation is made, they may be asked. And, but again, I thank you for taking your opportunity to, your time to meet with us so we can come together and ask these questions, and, and so we can make sure we can have the right answers to care back to our constituents. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Jason. Commissioner Hale.
First of all, I'd like to bring it back to the Craven County Board of Education, and in doing so, I'd like to also share with you the Craven County Schools' vision, which I think embodies where we are, where we're going, and our future, if I may. We envision a public education system that challenges all students as learners and prepares them to imagine and create a successful life, values educators, and empowers them to inspire and spark innovation in every student, leads in education and community engagement, and invites all students, their families, and all members of the community to work together to support public education to the benefit of our students, our community, our nation, and our world. That is why we serve. I would ask the board, Dr. Doyle, would you be prepared to give the presentation that they have asked for, at least updates? And then if the board wishes you may have comments as well, is that a way to proceed? Thank you, Dr.
So Chairman, just so I understand, you would like for me to make the presentation and then have a board speak?
If they, yeah, if that is their wish, but please, that is their request.
Do we speak now or after Dr. Doyle make her presentation? The presentation consists of?
I believe the presentation, Dr. Linnley speak for it, but it's how we got to where we are, challenges and concerns, and how we move forward.
It's the same presentation the board heard at their meeting in September.
What did she say, speak? Was it for us to speak?
No, she, no, she didn't say either way. I asked, what did you think?
I think perhaps we should speak, and then you can tell, you can give details as to where we are and what our plans are. I, I'm hearing the same thing. Am I, am I speaking? Thank you. I'm hearing the same kind of things that you are hearing. I hear the need, and I'm aware, we all are aware, that children need to be in school, parent needs support. We know that. We know that children are not doing their best learning at home, and we know that internet is not providing what children really need. There's one thing that I'm hearing that has not been mentioned, is that people are not only concerned about the education of their children, but they're concerned about their health and well-being as well. And the best thing that I can do as a board member is the things that we are doing. We are, we're listening, trying to listen to our best resources. We hear what parents need, and we know that we need to address the needs of our students and parents and community people. We know that we need to listen to our staff, our support groups, the health community. In the past, we have made our decisions based on this. And I, and I think that we were wise in doing so. I know that, that we are, we are, we are having loss because of that. I know that everybody's not happy because of that. I'm not happy. But when I think of the best that I could do for a child, I first think of his health and well-being. Education is essential, but as I said before, death is permanent. Illness and conditions are sometimes leave us with permanent conditions. And I have to, I have to think of those things. I have to consider them when I'm trying to make the best decision that I can. I agree with all of you. We don't have the resources that we need. All of you know that the Board of Education, someone spoke that they are gonna be listening when it comes to dealing with money. The Board, all of you know that the Board operates not as an independent entity, but we operate by the will of the people and the commissioners. That's how we operate. We do the best that we can, and we don't always, we don't always get it right, but we have to do the best that we can at the time when we'll make a decision. We are willing to listen, we're willing to take advice, we're, we're willing to investigate, to do whatever we can that we can give our children what they need. Many members of this Board of Education are parent, they are former educators or current We are concerned, we hear the concerns of folk. We feel the frustration just as you do. And as a group, with your help, we will do what we can, what we must for the boys and girls in Craven County. I can't give you specifics, but I can tell you that, and, and someone spoke to people leaving Craven County, they do leave Craven County every day, you know what happens to them? They come to Craven County from other systems because they are not happy with their system. They come to us and tell us they're happier in Craven County. So it goes both ways. So we don't get it all right, but as a group, we do the best we know at the time that we're doing it.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Vice Chairman Boomer, would you like to address?
I would like to say that I am certainly glad that we as board members don't have low self-esteem, because after all that we have heard this morning, it has been all negative, and that we did not believe in ourselves, or believe that what we is doing for the best thing for our children, we probably would have our now old crow under the table. It says, I have not heard anybody say anything positive about the things that we are doing in the system. All I've heard are negative things. And of course, that is your opinion about what we are doing. And just as they are saying negative things about what we are doing as a school board, don't think that they're not saying negative things about you as county commissioners, because we have learned that no matter what we do in life, you're not gonna ever satisfy everybody. Just as you got your complaints, we get ours too. But we can't make a decision that going to satisfy everybody. If we do that, we would have done more than what God has done, and that would never happen. But we do the best we can with what we have to work with. And we don't have any, and where the people form their own opinions about what they hear, about what we as individuals say to them, because we get upset about where something is handled, then we go to other people, and as leaders, guess what? We get people to follow us. And it doesn't do anybody any good. I heard one of the Commission budget in the spring. To me, that's blackmail. That's not how I feel about that. What is, if we don't do what, we just suppose what you all think that we should do, so you're gonna threaten us by taking the budget, the money that we gonna need to help educate the children? Is this what this all about? Are we gonna use this episode to influence the people who go to the poll, not to, to vote for the ones who are running for their positions? To us, it's not about politics. It is not about politics, it has never been about politics. It is about doing what we think is best for our children. And as Ms. Smith said, help is our first concern. The pandemic is nothing that we asked for. We got it, we didn't ask for it. Nobody asked for it. And the same problem that we are having in Craven County, do you think that we are the only ones who are having these problems? Do you think that other children in other places are not suffering just like our kids are? We don't want any child to suffer. We don't want that. Y'all crown about the B schedule, that we didn't start out with the B schedule. Nobody mentioned that even if we had started out with the B schedule, our high school kids and our middle school kids would still have only gone to school one day per week. They would only go one day. We would still have had the same internet problems, we would still have the same problems that we have when they were in a fancy. Our middle school, our elementary school would have gone two days, they still, nobody would have gone every day. So that, we, we would still have the same problems. We would still have the same problems, nothing would have changed that. Nothing would have changed that. But to say, but to criticize everything that has been done, like we have not done anything right, nothing right, we get the same abuse. We get abused on Facebook, we get abused through our emails, phone calls, text messages. So you get, so that your constituent will call you and complain, they do us the same way. But we don't try to throw anybody under the bus. We deal with the cards that we have. We still try to maintain our dignity, get together, and do what is best for the children in our county. And not only that, we have also worry about our teachers. We got teachers who are afraid. We got teachers who are going to retire, because they afraid to go back into the schools. So blaming somebody and criticizing us is not gonna solve the problem. What's gonna happen in December, when the election is over with, and everybody got good on Plan C? So where do we put the blame in? If it happened in March, it can happen again. So what do we do? Where is the blame going to lie? It is something that we all gonna have to work and deal with. It's nobody's fault. It is nobody's fault that we got, that we have to deal with the cards we have been dealt. Can't change anybody mind about how you feel. I'm sorry that your constituents are calling you and complaining, they're calling us to and complaining. And we deal with it the best that we can, every day.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Boomer. Ms. King, and then we'll invite the virtual listeners to, or board members to participate. Ms. King.
Good morning. We do wanna first thank you for the opportunity to sit around the table, to talk about something and to try to fix something that our nation can't fix. It's quite obvious, those of you that know me, know that I feel like I'm in the most ideal spot right now, because not only do I serve on the Board for Craven County Schools, but I'm an administrator in Pitt County Schools. So I have been in a tug-of-war since last March. And I blame the governor, because I think as, if he had made it simpler by telling each school district what to do, then we wouldn't be in the situation that we're in. But he knew that no, no, it was not gonna be a one fix size for every district. So he gave every district options. And given every district options, he gave us multiple options, which is why we're where we are today, meaning that we can't satisfy, as everyone has said, we cannot satisfy everyone. The number one essential employee that I think we have neglected to really talk about or to consider are our teachers. As you've presented with your data, that children are not doing well with online learning, which allows us to know that they need a teacher. allows us to know that they need a teacher. As Ms. Boomer stated, we have, like you guys, receive feedback while we're meeting. I'm receiving feedback right now from teachers saying, "I don't, I cannot go in the building. I have cancer. I have, you know, this. I have an elderly parent who has several underlying conditions. What am I supposed to do?" On the flip side, we're receiving, you know, emails and phone calls from parents that are saying, "The internet is horrible. What am I supposed to do?" Then I have parents that are saying, "My child is doing so much better now that they're online than they were face-to-face. What am I supposed to do?" That's the, that's the situation that we're all in right now. And I'm sure you guys probably go through the same thing that we've gone through, but I think I carry it a little differently because I'm in two school systems and having a dual role. I don't get very much sleep. And I don't get very much sleep because I care. As Ms. Boomer stated, I'm not a politician. I am an advocate. And I'm an advocate for our teachers and our students and our community. And because we are advocates, we carry the burden of everybody and try to satisfy the needs of everybody, which we cannot do. What do I think is best? Because that's what people have asked me. What do you think is best? What is best is that this would be dismissed and schools would open up and everybody could go back and play nicely in the sandbox as they used to. I don't think we're going to ever get back to that situation. So I do believe having as many options as we can, not just for students, but for teachers because that's where my hangup is right now. When we open up for Plan B and we can't do Plan B fluidly with fidelity, in my word, my mind, because we have teachers who are afraid to go back in schools, then that's going to present another issue for us in Craven County. I don't know what the answer is. I know that we have to continue, we have to continue the respectful dialogue. We have to continue to be active listeners and not always come in, you know, not come in one-sided and already have our minds made up. Because when we do that, what we're doing is we're hurting our, we're hurting our most precious stakeholders, which are our children. We have children who are, who have underlying conditions themselves. I have students at Pitt County that when they get off the school bus, they have on a mask, a shield, and gloves. Because they want to be in school, but they're afraid, or the parent is afraid for them to come in the building and contract something and take it back home to other, to grandma or to uncle or whomever that case may be. So we have to just continue to work together and to address situations and cases as they come up. Because prayerfully, we won't have any cases when we go back to school. We know that that's the realism and that is probably very small. But when those cases do arise, we have to be able to come back around the table to sit down again and figure out what's best for our students and our teachers. You know, we applaud you. I mean, this is hard for us because as Ms. Boomer stated, as Ms. B stated, we feel like we're being attacked right now, and no one likes to feel like they're being attacked. What we want to do is to present, to have an opportunity where we can all sit down together and figure out what's going to work best for Craven County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Those who are virtual, has anyone, are you muted or unmuted? If you raise your hand, would you be able to unmute so they could speak? I see Ms. Clark has her hand up. Is there a way that she can be unmuted?
Can you hear me?
We do.
Are you echoing?
We hear you. You may have to speak up just a bit more.
Okay. I'm echoing.
Yes, there is an echo.
It's because you have two different devices connected. You need to disconnect one of your devices, I believe, or maybe even two of them.
Okay. Is that better? I don't have anything connected to Dr. Doyle. I don't have anything.
It may be that you're in a room that's causing the reverberation.
I will go to a different world. I'm going to get back with you, okay? Cam, I mean, Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith, are you able to speak? And thank you, Ms. Clark. I understand that difficulty there.
Yeah, can you hear me better?
Yes.
Okay. First, I want to thank you all for having us and trying to have a conversation. I will say, I agree with everyone who's spoken so far that it doesn't really feel like a conversation. It feels, it feels, it feels more like a, like an ambush or an attack. And I'm sure that you didn't mean it that way. Mr. Booker initially, you know, said he regretted the three board members. We're not here, but we are all here. I am, because we're in a pandemic, under medical quarantine, though it is real and it does exist, and there are repercussions for people. I'm not working this week because I'm under quarantine, and so I'm here this way, but nonetheless, here. And I think that it's really, I know that your jobs are really hard. So are ours. We would never, there's not a board member on our board that would ever publicly criticize the work that you do. Because we know how difficult that work is. It does a disservice, we know, that it does a disservice to our community and the end result that we all want, which is a successful school system that benefits all and successful children. Every one of us cares about our children. Every one of us cares about our staff. You get complaints. I'll get 50 or more a day. Well, I really complaints, but concerns. Try to answer them all. Sometimes one slips through the cracks. We hear them, we care. The complexities of running a school system sometimes escape people who aren't aware of all the complexities. You pull back one layer to solve a problem and you create another. There are just so many different scenarios of things that happen and that we've learned a lot. We have certainly not done everything right because we're humans, right? We're going to make mistakes. We're going to make errors. And we're going to try to fix them and move on. But we all want to get all of our children back in school. We all want to do it safely. And I think a more productive way to do this, I appreciate Commissioner Jones talking about the internet, because that is an area that we can all work together because pandemic will not be the last thing that this community faces. You know, we thought hurricane and then what will happen next? And then, of course, you know, we have a flood, we have a pandemic. There will be something after this that challenges us. So good things have come from this in that we have learned how to deliver instruction in many different ways, and some children are thriving in different ways. I mean, some of them are thriving on the internet. I hear that daily. Some are not, and we need to get them back in person. And I regret that we did not let Dr. Doyle give her presentation first because I feel like it would have answered many of the questions and set the tone for this discussion a lot differently. So I sincerely regret that that agenda did not recur the respect of giving that presentation first. And I know that these two boards can work together and will work together for the, for the greater community because we all live here, we all love this community, we all love the people in the community and want it to be successful. And being combative and accusatory with each other is not the way to do that. We all know that. We all know that we are all tense, all stressed. The economy, the pandemic, having to be quarantined in our houses, all of us are stressed. But that's when we have to lead. And we have to lead with our hearts that everybody on both boards have and with the respect for the offices that we were all elected to. So I look forward to hearing Dr. Doyle's presentation.
Ms. Clark or Mr. Iplod? Ms. Clark, did you solve your echo issue? I think you're muted.
It's in the lobby.
Go ahead.
It says, "It has moved me to the lobby. You can join after the host admits you."
You're alive now. We can hear you.
Oh, okay. I echo everything that my colleagues have said. No one can legitimately question that any of us don't want these kids going back to school. When I first heard that one of the Board of Commissioners was disappointed that I was not there, I'm disappointed that you don't realize that virtual is me being there. That being said, I'm heartened by Mr. Sam saying, "We're in this all together." And we are. All of us care about these kids. There's nothing that would make me happier than have these kids go back to school tomorrow. But we also have other constituents such as our teachers, such as our custodians, such as our central staff. When I have a teacher call me and say, "I have given my daughter a copy of my will because I'm afraid that I'm going to die," we need to work on something. Mr. McKay, with regard to the connectivity and a lack of connectivity in Harlow, we need to look into that. Because as of two weeks ago, I've been working with Mr. Stacy Lee at the central office. He has set up a system with having a high school, Roger Bell, and HMS, where basically they advise in every week of those kids that do not have connectivity. But I also know, though, that it's not just the rural areas such as western part of the county in Harlow, we have problems with our internet within the city as well. So what do we do in the meantime? Perhaps we can go to hard access. It's going to require teachers, and I know that already Bob Biden, or someone in the schools, to stop making comments. Because even those kids that have connectivity, their parents are saying, "Well, Zoom is not coming through clearly." So those are things that we can work on together to effectively ensure that our kids have the best education there is. I'm a product of public education. Clark kids who are public education and abashedly proud of being a public education product. But again, what do we do in the future? And that's our plan, to try to get us back effectively to ensure the safety of all. We're driven not just by folks wanting to get back to school because we're well aware the kids are falling behind. But it's not just peculiar to Craven County. That's a nationwide problem. And that's what we also need to realize. With regard to the voters, I agree, that's democracy. Our voters should be informed. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Board of Commissioners and my colleagues for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Iplod.
I hope that I'm coming through clear.
You are.
Yes, sir. Well, my apologies for being a little slow to get engaged this morning. As Mr. Byke well knows, a day up here in the Smoky Mountains, when the smoke descends, you lose all contact. And I think that might be a good metaphor to share with the situation that we're going through right now, that we have got a number of smoky days. When the veil lifts a little bit, we get answers to things that we were looking for. And then, lo and behold, there's another rain cloud or whatever, and we find out that we're not doing as well as we thought we were. I don't want to get too philosophical, but the stress that we're all feeling, I think, you know, is spilling over, and it's spilling over into each other's buckets, and that just adds to the stress. And what we need to be doing is talking face-to-face, virtual or in-person, and having one-on-one conversations. If you've got concerns that you want to share with me, I'm available to you. I would like to hear from you. We can commiserate because that's what we as board members, school board members are doing right now with a lot of folks, what they call. They're asking for things that sometimes we can help a little bit with, sometimes we can't solve. My big job, I shouldn't say my big job, I see our big job is to listen and then to evaluate and then sit back and make the best decision that each one of us can with the knowledge that we have and cast our votes, make our motions, cast our votes in our discussion accordingly. We've been doing this long enough to know that we've got a third of the people who want to be full and back, a third of the people that want to be in this B plan, a third of the people that do not want to be back at all. And to find the magic answer for three different disparate views like that, it's not always the easy thing. The one thing I do appreciate, our leadership has been phenomenal in connecting us with the appropriate people to give us advice and to hear where we are in our local community. I appreciate the governor also, just for the reasons that Mrs. King stated. He allowed us individually, community by community, to make our decisions based on what's happening right here. I happen to be in Lebon County right now. The incident rate is far lower, even with the university next door, the incident rate is far lower than it is in Craven. It's just a totally different situation. So their decisions can be different than the decisions down in eastern North Carolina. I'm also privileged to sit with the School Board Association, and we're having lots of virtual meetings. And I'm hearing from our friends that are on school boards all across the state, their leadership and their superintendents exactly the same issues that we're facing right here. I think the biggest one that we've all seen that has to be resolved in some way is the connectivity. The connectivity, whether we're back full-time or not, has got to be resolved because we have built into our calendar now, I think, five days that will be remote, that will test periodically our capability to deliver and connect virtually. For us down east, that's something we've been wanting for a while, primarily because we're faced periodically with hurricanes and days out from flooding and weather events in the mountains, it's the snow events, that we need to be able to have our kids engaged so that they're not falling behind and losing out. So any work that we can do, I do want to give a shout out to Dennis Sawyer and Wayne Beasley. They had a vision some years ago, I think you remember, to put broadband cable throughout the county, basically. And we finally got the last pieces put in over the last couple of years. And so, Mr. Byke, all those community leaders that participated in making that happen, very much appreciate it. We were at the front in terms of total ability to extend the network out in our county, even our rural county, as compared to a lot of other systems. So we have capitalized on that to some degree. Problem is, it ends at the end of the fingers, and then how do you get that wireless, that connectivity out in communities that are in dead cells and, you know, perhaps have satellite issues and things like that that interrupt the learning? That's what we all need to be focused on. And so I'm real glad that we're with you in solving these problems.
Thank you, Mr. Iplod. Chairman, did you want to address a break?
Why don't we take it after the superintendent?
I asked the chairman if he wanted to have a break, and his response, if everyone is agreeable, is that let the superintendent present, and then we'll take a break. And Dr. Doyle, is that agreeable?
Good morning, Chairman. Members of each of the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Bennett, if you would skip to slide number five. I recognize that both boards have been sitting for a while, and I want to make sure that you all get the information, hopefully that you were requesting of the Board of Education. So on slide five, there's a description with corresponding, yes, that's the one, yes, pictures that exhibits what the three plans that the Board of Education and all school districts in North Carolina were required to create in anticipation of opening school this year. Plan A is minimal physical distancing. Plan B, moderate physical distancing. And Plan C, remote learning. As you know, until the semester break, which actually will occur for our early college students next week, those early college students will be returning to in-person instruction beginning on Monday. Once the new nine weeks begin, we will transition to Plan B. Once the new nine weeks begin, we will transition to Plan B, which is moderate physical distancing. There are two very large documents that kind of dictate what the requirements are for us in implementing these plans. One is from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and then a toolkit that accompanies that from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Those requirements are very lengthy and very involved. All of them, though, are based on public health guidance and requirements to keep our staff and students safe as we endeavor to continue instruction for our students. Next slide. As you know, the governor has provided multiple options for us to begin, the latest being on the 17th, when he did expand the option for K-5 students to come on Plan A. One thing that I want to make sure that folks understand in Plan A is that there is minimal physical distancing and really no other profession...
Attention! Emergency has been reported in the building.
As we got interrupted by the fire alarm, I appreciate that the security system in this building is working very effectively and keeping all of us safe. That's critical.
That's what we call a break.
Yes, sir, that was a break.
That was a scheduled break.
The one thing I want to say about, that I was saying as we took a break, was that one of the challenges with our, the educators that are kind of on the front lines during this time of great uncertainty and exposed potentially during the pandemic is that they're a profession unlike many others in that they're going to be in classrooms if we return to Plan A, hopefully, and actually it's when we return to Plan A at some point. They will be in small spaces, smaller spaces, with higher concentrations of people for longer periods of time than most any other profession, which is one of the challenges that I think our board and our staff confront as we try to make plans to move forward. Next slide. And the next slide really is just an update of the Strong Schools North Carolina Public Health Toolkit, which has come from the Department of Health and Human Services, and this is really the document that gives us our direction. Next slide. There are a great deal of constraints on our operations as we transition from Plan C to Plan B. The first one is transportation, and notably, as the governor made his announcement about the option for Plan A, one thing he did indicate, and that the toolkit reflects now, is that they strongly recommend that we maintain the requirements on transportation for Plan B regardless of what plan we adopt if we're having any in-person instruction. What that means is that there's only one student per seat, so a bus that might be able to accommodate 68 to 72 bus riders may now only be able to accommodate 22 to 24 bus riders, which is a huge constraint on our ability to transport. As we've benchmarked with other districts around our region, we have found that the use of transportation has declined, but until we get into any in-person instruction, we won't know what that level of decline is. So transportation is a huge constraint on our plans regardless of how we return. Personnel and the impact of infection on employees. Our organization, just like many others, and we've worked very hard to communicate to our public, our staff especially, and our families as we begin transitioning to Plan B, is the impact of quarantine and infection on our employees. When a teacher has to be quarantined, then that removes them effectively from the classroom. We do have an availability of substitute teachers who have been trained to do all the things that we would be required to do as we return to in-person instruction. However, that sub-list is significantly diminished because many of our subs are also many of our retired employees, and many of them, because purely of their age, are also at risk and have opted out of substituting during this time, understandably so. In addition, our building capacities in Plan B are that they would be limited to no more than 50% because many of our classrooms in our buildings, as the Board of Commissioners remembers, we were within days of trying to submit to our board some finalized plans for a long-range facility master plan and then to turn that over hopefully to our Board of Commissioners. But we have lots of classrooms in Craven County schools that have very small square footages, and so building capacities are even more significantly limited in our older buildings. Next slide, please. So as we transition to Plan B next week for our early college students, many of which I would say about a third of our early college students are also attending the community college, who for the most part is remote right now as well. Those students will return for in-person instruction one day a week, and our kindergarten students will return to four days a week of instruction. Our grades first through fifth will be two days a week, and then our grades sixth through 13th, and that includes our early college fifth-year seniors, will, again, as I mentioned, be on A, B, C, or D. It is our goal, as we see what transitions our students want to make from our virtual-only option, and we were required by the Department of Public Instruction and the governor to offer a virtual-only option. So we have teachers now who are teaching what is called Craven Live, and that is just those students who have opted for remote instruction through the end of the fall semester, which would be the holiday, the Christmas break for us. If students want to transition away from that option or transition to that option, we're going to have to evaluate those requests on a case-by-case basis. We told our community and those students who signed up for Craven Live, the virtual-only option, that they would be making a semester-long commitment. However, we also know that there are mitigating circumstances that we will still have to consider. As we consider those, then we will also look at our available space and see if we can add additional days at the secondary level and at the elementary level based on our building capacities. So we will hopefully be working on that, and that will be an ongoing process as we get students in school for the first week, evaluating our class sizes and the number of students that are in physically our classrooms, and then being able to say, can we add another day of instruction as we consider our capacities? Next slide, please. So actually, the next two slides. So there are four kind of significant areas that we are considering, that we have to consider in the operational plans. One is the physical spaces, I've covered that a bit, the healthy environments, transportation, I have mentioned that also, and then scheduling and transitions. All of these strategies are to reduce the potential for spread and then also reduce the potential for disruption if there is someone who is in the building who becomes ill. So as an example, if we have a student who, or even a staff member, who becomes ill, we want to limit the amount of other people that they are around during a day so that we don't have to quarantine, you know, 20 to, you know, 50 students, we only would have to quarantine a small number of students. And so these considerations have been also pretty stringent for our principals as well. The next slide talks about our physical spaces. If you've been in a school recently, you'll see all the signage and the visual cues that have been put in place, not just for hallways but also for classrooms. We're requiring all students to wear face coverings, and we'll, all of our staff are wearing face coverings as well. Furniture and barriers are present for our... Furniture spacing is exhibited in our classrooms, and then barriers in our front offices where there's a high-traffic exposure potentially for our front office staff. And then each school, in addition to having a regular well nurse's office, has a room for quarantine in the event that someone, either staff or student, gets sick. Those rooms, as well as our school nurses, require an additional amount of personal protective equipment, which, as you know, has been hard to come by. We have received that equipment, but all of that inventory is based on continued availability. The next slide is about healthy environments. We are requiring temperature screenings and symptom monitoring for our students. Students will either be monitored before they get on the bus or as they walk up to the building, if they're a walker, or if they are dropped off in the carpool line. And then students will also be checked one other time in the day to make sure that there's not, for example, Tylenol that is stopping a fever from exhibiting and then masking someone who might actually be symptomatic. Obviously, you know we have devices that each student is assigned, and so they don't have to share those devices. And then we are eliminating the use of communal spaces, our cafeterias and larger areas and media centers. Students will eat in their classrooms, and then books will be delivered to their classrooms as opposed to them going into those spaces and mixing further. Again, the goal is to reduce the amount of people that anyone would come in contact with that might be symptomatic to reduce the potential exposure to others. The environment, our school layouts have been laid out in terms of the number of students and staff that can fit in each classroom, as well as the traffic patterns that should be followed in schools. At our secondary schools, in particular, high schools, because there is still a requirement for classes to change, our high schools have created one-way hallrooms, hallways, so that students are only going one way in a building as opposed to crossing in front of each other and having that opportunity for continued close physical proximity. Restrooms have been altered to adjust for the number of students that should be in the restroom, so again, that there's not congregating of students and the potential for infection. And of course, students and staff wearing face coverings. Students, staff in our high-needs, special-needs classrooms with our students who are significantly cognitively disabled or physically disabled, those staff will have a higher amount of personal protective equipment, not just the face coverings, but also the plastic shields and other protective equipment, that they will have gloves and that type of thing. Next slide. And then finally, I discussed transportation. The bus capacities are limited in any of the plans at this point. And then we'll be conducting regular cleaning and disinfection that will happen not just by our custodians but also by our teachers after class changes. And then we've got videos that have been created for our students and parents about how to behave in our schools, in our, at bus stops, and at places, so they understand the expectations when they return back to school. Next slide about scheduling and transitions. We're going to reduce visitors, especially at first. The more that we can limit the amount of people that are in a building, the better we can contain the amount of virus that potentially could spread. Again, we're keeping students in cohorts, so the kids that are on A day, they'll remain on A day, B day, C day, or D day, depending on, and again, that's another way for us to reduce the exposure of students. And then entrances and exits, there's a great deal of signage, and we have one-way door, so people will enter through one door and exit through a different one, again, just trying to reduce the potential for those high-touch areas to infect people. The next slide talks about the input that we received through our surveys this summer in terms of returning to in-person instruction. You can see that on that slide, our students and parents were about the same in that they wanted to, about 60 to 70% of them wanted to be back to some type of in-person instruction. 43% of students and 43% of parents wanted all in-person. About 20% of students and 26% of parents wanted to be blended. The more challenging situation, and this is very reflective of the number of our teachers that are at risk and have maybe at-risk family members, 26 or 27% of our staff wanted to be totally in-person, and about 33% wanted to be blended. Another third wanted to remain fully online. Just as a reminder, approximately 4,000 students at this time, 3,700 registered and are participating in Craven Live, and they have effectively made that commitment for the semester. As I said previously, we are going to be evaluating students who need to make requests for bona fide circumstances to try to make those transitions if we can. So you can see that the range was from about 60% of our teachers wanting some in-person instruction all the way to almost 70% of our parents wanting some in-person instruction. And we received a great deal of feedback, as the Board of Commissioners did as well, about getting students back to in-person instruction. A large majority of that was from our young students, so we know that that is an issue, as well as from our parents that have students who have significant cognitive and behavioral, not behavioral but physical special needs. And the concerns are the same concerns that both boards have mentioned today, the challenges of remote learning, the social and emotional impact on our students, which we absolutely recognize, and the lack of internet access for virtual learning. And it's not just access in some of our remote areas, it's the consistency of access in places where we should expect consistent internet access. Even at my house, I can't get continuous internet, and I, you know, live in the center of the county. The next slide documents the continued planning that our staff has done, even though we were ready to start on Plan B when we began the school year. We have done even more preparation to assist with communication, and this is actually the next slide, Mr. Bennett. Our facilities have continued to put signage in facilities preparation. We have hand sanitizer everywhere you can imagine. A great deal of videos and training has continued for our custodians and our staff. Transportation, I really have to sing the praises of our transportation director, Dr. Thomasine Hassel. She has gone as far as to make assigned seats on every bus. So again, we are aware if there is a student on a bus who might become symptomatic later on the day, we can easily isolate only those students who are within any kind of physical proximity to that student as opposed to affecting everyone who was on that bus or everyone who was in those classrooms. She's done a phenomenal job. However, every time we make a change, it affects her plans as well, and that's really been the challenge to all of the staff preparation, is trying to accommodate all the plans and turn very quickly based on the changing needs of our community. Instructional leaders actually are meeting with teachers today to talk about the lessons we've learned from other districts, what has worked and what has not, so that we can make a plan that allows us to be the most effective as we transition to Plan B. And then our school health, our nurses, again, are another group who have just done an amazing amount of work in creating processes and practices, doing contact tracing for our employees and students when necessary, training the other school nurses, and training all of our staff on these safety protocols and the symptom monitoring, and documenting those processes so that our families and community can be assured that there's been a great deal of work and preparation that's gone into helping our students come back to in-person instruction. And finally, our public relations and communications have created processes for public and stakeholder communication about positive cases. You may notice that every time that there's a positive case, we send out a press release. That's by design. As we transition to Plan B, we know we're going to have positive cases. We cannot stop, we're not a closed system. People are still going to the store, they're still going on vacations, they're still going out to the community, and there's still potential for exposure, and those folks have been still coming to school or to work. And so we don't want there to be any surprises as we encounter cases when we get back to school, and so we've really tried to be systematic in sending out press releases. In addition to the press releases, which are more general, every time a school has an affected staff member or when we get students back, students, the entire staff and families from that school will be notified by the school district. So they will, they will not have to wonder, was there a case at my school? If there's a case, they will find that out from us. Of course, we can't provide any identifying information, we have to still follow the rules with regard to health confidentiality, but we don't want anyone to think that we're trying to hide anything. And again, I cannot emphasize enough, as we come back to school, as more people are in more confined spaces, we're going to have people who are, who become infected. Our job is to make sure that we're doing and following all the processes that we've established and to communicate and keep moving forward. So also, we've created video resources, which you'll start to see being pushed out to the community, to our families and their, and students, as well as to our staff, to talk about all the processes that are in place, again, continued training for our employees to help them understand how we are moving forward to make progress. That is all I have at this time. I do want to emphasize the words of our Board of Education, and that is, every one of our Board of Education wants our students to return back to in-person instruction as quickly as possible. Right now, approximately 60% of the students in the state are remote only, which is a really high number. There have been significant challenges based on the inconsistency of the different plans in different districts, and we know that. There's also, though, challenges based on the different concentrations of viral spread in the different... in the different parts of our state. None of us really controls that, with the exception of, and I cannot say this enough, if we all do our part to wear our face coverings, to wash our hands, to maintain our physical distancing, even when we're at home with our families, it is uncomfortable right now, nobody wants to wear a face covering, I certainly do not, but it does help, and we can keep students and staff safer. We also can return to more normalcy if we can reduce the amount of virus in our community and get our students back into school more quickly. Our challenge as a school district is to facilitate the physical distancing of 13,000 students and 1,800 employees if we bring students back. That is not possible. We cannot physically distance everyone if we were to have that requirement. And so Plan A does not require us to have physical distancing, it just says we are requested to accommodate that as greatly as we possibly can. And so as we consider our next steps, we are going to help our staff to return to in-person instruction, return more students, hopefully week over week, to in-person instruction, serve those that we know are the most needy at this time, which are youngest students, kindergarten students coming all four days, our elementary students coming two days a week, our significantly disabled, cognitively and physically disabled students coming four days a week as well, and then work to increase those numbers as much as we possibly can in the coming weeks. There's no person in this room that understands more the impact that not having our teachers and our students physically in the same rooms is having on not just the current learning of our students, but the long-term outcomes for them. No one also, I think, understands the complexity that each one of us, in our respective roles, the things that have to be considered. On our Board of Education, these are a group of people who were not tasked with expertise in health, public health, but are making public health decisions every single day. Our Board of Commissioners, who is also weighing the challenges of the economic impacts of not having school on our families and our community. We all understand the challenges, and so with that, I'll turn it over for any questions that the Board wants to ask and hope to be able to provide any information. Anything I can't provide, I'll try to research and provide to you as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Before we go into questions, we have the Health Director here right now, and maybe he would like to make some comments.
May I make one more comment, Chairman Mark, on that note? And that is, I want to say publicly to the Board of Commissioners, our Board of Education is well aware, our Health Director has been with us on a number of our meetings, and we appreciate his advice and counsel as we've gone through this process, so I wanted to say that to your board. Thank you, Chairman, sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Mark. I did want to give a brief update, because as recently, we have, as recently as six days ago, we had a spike in activity, active cases in Craven County. Three hundred and twenty-five, the highest number of active cases that we've had yet during the pandemic. And today, I just checked our numbers as of today, six days later have come down to 143 active cases. Currently, we are up to 39 deaths. COVID is the third leading cause of death in the U.S. behind cancer and heart disease, so it is a serious matter. And I echo the statements of our Superintendent, Dr. Doyle, everybody needs to do their part. And I think that everybody now is well aware of what everybody, everyone needs to do. I would say best estimate, and that's all you have, you know, you don't know when the next spike will come, if it will come. It looks like we're trending down, and we're on the backside of our highest level of activity. I certainly hope that it continues to go in that direction. I did pull some information on outbreaks and clusters in public schools. Craven is listed for a cluster at New Bern High School, it's a quirky incident where children were really, they were New Bern High School students, but it really had nothing to do with the school facilities or anything of that nature, it was sort of outside curricular activities. So then you get down to some of the other schools, and it's handfuls, there was, there was one Christian school in the eastern region with 21 student cases, but they were an outlier, most are five or less. I do anticipate some type of activity, COVID activity, once children are brought back into school. What our contact tracers are telling us, as far as how these things are, how the cases are really playing out, is that people just getting together. This is spread by people. So they get together for birthday parties, coworkers outside of work getting together, and then they bring it to their place of work. So it really does look like if, it sounds like a very well-thought-out plan for reopening, and if all those precautions are taken. And I've said it before, I'll say it again, I do not think that is an environment conducive to viral spread, but fully anticipate that unknowingly, staff and students will bring coronavirus into the school settings, some form of fashion. And we just have to be prepared with the contact tracing to be able to do that. Another thing that I would like to mention is that it's not just Craven County, it's the eastern region. For the longest time, we were lagging behind the Triad Region and Mecklenburg Region for hospitalizations, and now the eastern region and the northeastern part of the state here in the last couple of weeks has caught up in hospitalizations, we're somewhere around 200 for the entire region, which does not stress or overstress the system, I just point out that that, that's a high hospitalization rate for us. And usually, they kind of go the way of the cases, so hopefully, if we see a downward trend in cases, we'll see a downward trend in hospitalizations. Overall, statewide, cases are still continuing to trend down. So it looks like the eastern part of the state, or our portion of the state, was just lagging behind some others in these cases. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Anybody have any questions to the Health Director?
I have one, Mr. Chair. For the various, I'm going to call them ad hoc school groupings, the pods that informally assemble, that parents have put together, neighborhoods have put together, have you seen any COVID outbreaks in those groups of students?
No, ma'am. That's another point to make, looking at some of the schools that may have had some students in, you know, Calvary, St. Paul's Epiphany that have had, and probably taking these, I know they're taking precautions as well. Some of their surrounding counties really haven't seen a lot of outbreaks or COVID activity in those areas.
Thank you.
Scott, the hospital, as far as being a regional hospital, we're taking other people from other counties. Correct?
Yes, sir. So, you know, our count will always be different on our reports as far as Craven County, because they're, they're serving several counties there, there at the hospital.
And the 39 deaths, those are usually up in the higher age brackets?
Yes, sir. I would say there's two that I know of specifically, a 30-year-old and a 25-year-old that had some underlying health issues. Those are our youngest cases, and there's a mixture, but I would say that over half will probably rest home, unfortunately, and, yeah, I'll leave it at that with the, with the information.
Is there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Health, for coming.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We had some questions from some of the Commissioners that held off. I'll start with Commissioner.
Sir, I have no questions.
You have no questions? Commissioner Booker?
I have no question.
No questions? Commissioner, Vice Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, yes, if I may, just ask a few, thank you for your presentation, Dr. Doyle. You did answer a number of the questions, and what has been given to me today were citizens who heard about our meeting and wanted to see if we could give a little more explanation, you know, about some of the concerns that they had. And this is in no particular order, so, you know, talking about Plan B, as you said, start on October the 19th. Has any school district across the state of North Carolina, or is it an option, it may not be an option, but has any school district across the state of North Carolina looked at, if you go in with Plan B, of doing a full week, five days, it's the AA group this coming week, they go five days, you do your deep cleaning on the weekend, and then Group B comes the following week, and you utilize the weekends for the deep cleaning. Is that being done anywhere in our state? Is it even allowed?
Yes, multiple districts have done multiple different plans. If you look across the state at the 115 school districts that are either, have made plans for Plan B or are already in Plan B, you will see rotating groups of students in some districts. I believe Pitt County is one that's doing rotating groups of students. Then you'll have some that are like us, that are doing one or two days a week for all students. The challenge really is on the teachers, and it is the planning. If a teacher is thinking about one or two or three groups of rotating students, there are pros and cons to both, and I would say that those superintendents would acknowledge there's pros and cons to both, just like we would acknowledge there's pros and cons to what our Board has selected. And that includes a teacher having to plan three to four weeks in advance, which may not be practical, as well as students would not be in school for two to three, two weeks at a time as they wait for their next cycle. This gives our school administrators and our teachers a regular touch with those students, and a regular way to check in with them. You'll see in the data that we've provided to the Commissioners, our attendance, especially at the secondary level, is probably some of the worst. I imagine some of that has to do with the fact that they are taking on other responsibilities for their families, to include work potentially, but also childcare and that type of thing. But they are the ones that our staff is really worried about in terms of making that regular contact, and so, again, giving them more time to not have that contact is probably the challenge that I would say our school administrators really weighed in on the most.
So our school system did look at that option, but we, but you felt like as a school board, as administration, that Plan B, going with two days AA, and then two days BB, was the best for?
Yes, our principals were involved in those discussions, and really, and there were also plans, quite frankly, there were plans that had just elementary school students coming in general, and then our secondary students being continually, continuing to be remote. All those kind of options were considered, this is what our, our school leaders landed on, and our district leaders landed on.
I understand. Again, this is no particular order. Definitely, just as I have received concerns from citizens who may feel like our students need to be in school today, I've also received, there's probably not as much as our school board members have, but calls and concerns from teachers about their health and well-being. And definitely, I don't want nobody to leave here today ever thinking that we, as a Board of Commissioners, don't take that into consideration. In all of our discussions we've had up to date, you know, we recognize our schools cannot go forward without all of our personnel, it takes all of them, I mean, we can't have a school day without them. My wife comes home and she tells me of the concerns we've got in, you know, our local school, and the concerns that she has. That being said, you know, with the challenge you have with the number, and I know you gave the statistic that was shared up here about how many of our personnel would love to just do the virtual and not go back in the classroom. But have you done a, and I hate to say surveys, I know we're all about dead of surveys, tired of surveys, but has there been any communication with a number of teachers directly to say, are you willing to go back in the classroom? Do you have a definitive number of how many that are not scared, that, you know, are willing, well, I think all are willing, but just do not, are not concerned as others, that we'll go back in the classroom and then we could open up schools? Do you have a number? I mean, and you don't have to share that number, I'm not trying to divulge that. What I'm getting at, my point is, you know, we've got to think outside the box, and I think everybody does in situations like that. And if, I think if you would remember, and Vice Chair Boomer, and Ms. Kim Smith, and Chairman, when we met with you before, you know, I presented to you, why not take and let's look at our most vulnerable students across this county, those that do not have internet service, our exceptional children, those who just, the parents cannot be with them to help, they don't have no guardianship. You know, have we looked at that to look at, could we go ahead and get those students back into Plan A? Do we have schools that could be reopened to go ahead and accommodate that? You know, I respect wholeheartedly, and I'm, and I'm, we'll allow you to speak, I'm not trying to go, but I just want to make sure it's understood. I respect the challenges with Plan, that you've got just trying to implement Plan B, and I do have more questions with that. But, you know, I'm having these hubs around the county that I've talked to, I've reached out to, and they're telling me they've got children there in first grade that can't read. And that's not the fault of teachers, it's the circumstance we've been dealt with in this county with hurricanes, and now with COVID. I think we are of urgency here, that's why I say, I think, me as a Commissioner, I recognize y'all are in charge of this, but why am I passionate about it? It's because I see the urgency we've got across this county, for so many that are just so far behind because of all these other circumstances, and I know you're taking them in consideration. So going back to my question, is it even possible, I mean, that we could have a few schools, elementary-wise, schools across this county to open up to Plan A, ASAP, to go ahead and allow these students to start receiving the education that we all want them to have?
So, Commissioner, I appreciate those questions, and that's kind of what I was alluding to in terms of, once we figure out where our students are with Craven Live and whether we have to make some transitions there, we're going to start trying to, and assessing based on criteria that you mentioned, okay, that our, our leaders, school leaders, and our district leaders are putting together, how we can bring more students back for more days of instruction every day, and trying to work to get that at the highest level possible, and also get to a point where we really have a good number of understanding about the staff that really are scared. You mentioned the question about, have we surveyed? That's not really easy. The only thing we can really go off of is the teachers who've requested accommodations. And, you know, we follow the same rules that you all would follow as an employer in asking folks to request accommodations through the various legislations that we are held to right now, and in general with, you know, disabilities, but also with COVID. So we have a number of staff, about, I think, 60, 65, that have requested accommodations, but while we were on Plan C, some of those accommodations no longer apply because we're returning to in-person instruction, and so as a result, in-person instruction does require, even those folks that might be doing Craven Live, those staff members to be with us to assist with the symptom monitoring, the supervision, and helping our students facilitate their physical distancing. But school improvement teams are working as a group to say who will do what job, so that we can reduce the exposure of those teachers who are most at risk and allow them to continue their teaching virtually. But I'll say, we are working towards what you have mentioned, Commissioner Jones, we are really trying to get as many students back to in-person as we can, even as we are on Plan B, have some time to make that transition, and then begin monitoring the health of our staff and students, see if we have any significant issues, and then be in a position to make recommendations to the Board about moving to Plan A at our elementary schools if our health metrics, as well as what happens in our schools, allow us to do that. But as soon as we can begin making those transitions for individual students, we're going to try to do that.
Well, that's good to hear, and I appreciate that, and I, and I hope that that's something that the media that's listening today, parents, those that help spread the word, that will go and communicate that. I think that's vital.
And let me say that there will be communication that's coming out about that from the district, and so we ask the public to, parents especially, to be watching that, make sure you're paying attention to the deadlines and the timelines, so that your requests can be received in a timely fashion, and we can consider them in a timely fashion.
Right. Mr. Chairman, I do have several more questions, I don't know if you want to go to somebody else?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I've also had somebody that came to me, actually yesterday, and said they had heard that students would possibly be dismissed from school at 1:30. It was a parent who came to me. Is there any truth to that? I mean?
The only constraints we would have on our, the day of, the school day would be transportation-based, we have not announced anything. We have not announced anything like that. Ms. Dr. Hassel, who again, I have to commend to all of the elected officials in this room and staff, has done an amazing job in terms of scheduling those buses. We don't see anything in that regard. There are districts around us who have done that, who have reduced their school day to accommodate the other options that they're providing to students.
So we're still looking at that for the student, the eight, the elementary, eight to three?
Yes.
I know you have staggered times, but?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's good, thank you. Also, and I think you've probably gotten this too, probably some from my end of the county, and I know Reverend Boomer has too, but the learning hubs that we have, I know it's a challenge, but is it going to be able, are you going to be able to take into consideration of, of maybe grouping these learning hubs together?
That's part of the communication that's going to come out from the district sometime today about if you want to make a request for your student to be on a specific schedule. We've already accommodated one in the western end that already had reached out to us, and we've had others that have reached out, and we've started to make accommodations for. I, I do want the public to understand, as well as our board already does, but the Board of Commissioners to understand as well, we're, every time we have these kind of sections where we're making these requests to change schedules, we're reconfiguring the entire district. So it does take us a while, a little bit of time to make those accommodations for our students, and then make sure that we've got the staff in place to effect those changes.
Bus, busing these students, and I, and I see that is probably one, well, everything's a challenge, but that's definitely one of the biggest challenges, no doubt, to have half the amount of students on a bus. When they're on the highway, I mean, is the bus driver going to get off, take their temperature, or when they come to the door, take their temperature? How, how is that process going to?
We'll have a couple of options, just, just different layers of protection. Our, one of our directors, I think, painted a very good analogy in this regard. Think of it as a salad bowl colander, that we're going to put multiple different layers of, of barriers in to try to stop anyone who might be infected or have symptoms from getting to the front door of the school. So the first thing is, bus drivers will add, will just take the temperature. If the temperature is good, then the kid will get on the bus and they'll move on. So it, it won't be a, a long rigamarole. When they get to the school then, then the questions will be answered and then we'll record that information. So the bus driver is only just taking the temperature very quickly and letting them get on or not. One of the things that we're going to be communicating to parents very quickly is that in our students with, in grades K through five, they have to have either a parent or a responsible adult with them at the bus stop, because if they have a temperature or they're exhibiting symptoms, they will not be allowed to get on. Obviously, you know, we may have some challenges with that, and so, there may be some delays in our, our buses on the first day or so, although I, I do believe that our parents are so ready to get our students in, and I've heard from other superintendents in the region that that really has not been an issue, that parents have been great about having their, themselves or another adult at the bus stop to make sure that that does not happen. So, again, we're just trying to, at each checkpoint, stop students who might be symptomatic from getting through the front doors and mixing with other students.
Two more questions, Ms. Chairman. And this kind of goes offline a little bit, I mean, I, I think that you've, all of you, I listened to some of your meetings, and I think you've probably already addressed this to some degree. But I've had some parents that have talked to me about the amount of work that their child has versus they talk to another school down the road and, you know, they're not, they don't have as much, and, and the concern of, you know, the, the length of time these students are just standing, sitting there behind with, with their online learning and then trying to do it. Was there, and I, I want to make sure I get my words right, this may not be the right way to say it, but I'm going to put it this way, a uniform expectation from the Board of Education in what you were expecting, amount of time that, you know, each student should be doing work, or how much work they should have?
Yes, sir. In the spring, we got a great deal of feedback that we had students from kindergarten all the way to, you know, fifth-year seniors that were in front of their devices for way too long. Based on that feedback, we reevaluated the times that we had, especially making grade span decisions, so students in grades K through five, less time in front of the device because, quite frankly, they're not going to pay attention, you know, they just, the attention span is less. Middle school students, a little bit longer in front of the screen, and then high school students closer to their full class period, but even so, not the total amount of time. There are still requirements for independent work that students should be receiving, as well as they could be doing small group work or connecting with their teacher through their, what are called, office hours. But we did send out those uniform expectations, we, and we are in the process of evaluating them again. We've asked our school leaders and teachers to, again, communicate that information to our parents, and we've gotten some feedback that we are going to evaluate to help us to keep moving forward, not just with our students that are moving to Plan B, but our students that will remain virtual to continually improve those processes. So yes, there was a uniform expectation, it should be consistent. We also know that, you know, making sure that there's consistency across 15 different elementary schools, for example, is sometimes difficult. If there are concerns, though, we first would ask that parents make contact with the school if they're concerned either by the too much time or too little time, and then if there's, those concerns are not addressed, please bring them to the district, we do want to address them.
The last question, and, and we've already touched on this, but this is, out of all the questions that folks have called me about and talked to me about, this is the number one. What criteria is the Board of Education, what are you looking for to determine about going into Plan A? I mean, I know we're talking about a phased in, we've already covered that, you know, once we, we start Plan B and then phase in and seeing how things go. But I mean, are there, are there numbers that you're looking for? Is there certain criteria, or is it just mainly, you're trying to go through Plan B, see how it works before you start considering and discussion Plan A?
Obviously, I cannot speak for the board. I will say that our work on the staff level is to get our students in person at some point quickly, to kind of assess what that looks like and whether we can accommodate more, and then make recommendations to the Board of Education about Plan A. I think that they're, we have constantly been looking at, and we appreciate the very transparent data that Craven County provides to us in terms of our health metrics in the community and the level of community spread, and we are all consulting that data as we make decisions moving forward. And so, those are the considerations on our point of view. We want to make sure that we're not missing something in terms of getting students back in person, and once we feel comfortable, hopefully very quickly, then we can begin thinking about making recommendations to the board at that time. As far as the board is concerned, I can't, that would...
May I comment on that? And I think you did a great job of addressing it, but I share with you, we, and I'm not speaking for the board, but as I understood it, we believe that transitioning slowly, smaller groups, allowing those kindergarten, first graders to get used to wearing a mask and coming to school, finding out what our protocols, our cleaning, cleansing requirements are, it was best to do that and learn from it.
Yeah.
And then I think we can take that to our work session and say, what did we learn? How do we do it? Are we ready? And again, I go back, especially kindergarten sort of, it's critical they be there, but we also have to make sure they are adjusted and ready to come into the classroom.
Right.
It also gives, with Plan B, gives a teacher more direct contact with smaller groups. All of those are considerations that I think about, and I know we'll have that conversation. And I wonder, I don't want to take over, Dr. Doyle, but does anyone, Ms. Boomer, you have a comment?
I have one, please.
So that's part of the consideration.
May I also add, no one yet has gone to Plan A. They will not do that until next Monday. We do not know what the impact of that is going to be. It will probably be the largest group, the largest entity, agency of North Carolina government and local governments that will have that level of concentration of people in one place. And so, being vigilant to the health of our students and staff, I think that we want to make sure that we're not unknowingly put anyone in harm's way, but also moving towards the transition of Plan B, which we have seen has resulted really in no significant increases in viral spread. So I'll say from, from the staff's point of view, it's really making sure that we know what we're putting our employees and our students in front of before we make those transitions.
Last comment, Ms. Chairman, and I will, I just, I, I do want to say, because today, we do have a lot of people that's tuned in. This has been an anticipated meeting, and I, and I, you know, this was not an ambush, not, that's not my desire nor was the desire of anybody. The desire is to just, for our boards to communicate, for our boards to be able to share openly, you know, and then that's what our desire is, that's the only thing that we desire. And I appreciate being forthcoming, as the boards have been, and the communication we've received. I would just say, on behalf of myself, you know, I, I do appreciate our, our teachers. I know that I've had some communicate with me that, you know, they said they have spent more hours, it's more challenging with virtual learning, online learning, you know, than it is for us face-to-face. And the amount of time in trying to make sure that students, they're getting their work done, that they're following up with them, parents when they get home, that they're working, talking to them. I mean, they're, you know, I have some say, you know, I'm, I'm working till close to midnight and then back up in the morning again. We appreciate what you're doing, nobody discredits that at all. We've got a, we've got a situation that, I mean, really, you know, we all know that, and, and we've got those that, to some degree, just, parents feel like their child is not getting anything, and it's not the fault of the teacher, it's just the circumstances we've got. And, and that's our goal, is just how in the world can we try to, the work to make and accomplish that, and I thank you for what you're doing too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I, I, you know, a comment was made that there was a lot of negativity. I don't believe the Chairman and myself were bringing negativity into this meeting. What we were trying to do is answer some of the questions that our constituents had placed upon us. And one of the questions was, why are we starting on the 19th when the governor said we could start on the 5th? And we're on Plan B. I think that you've answered that question. The part about, one of the things that I get quite often is, well, you know, school teachers are afraid to go to school. However, I work for Company A, and we've got 400 employees, and they have to go to work every day, so why can't the school teachers go to, to, to work? That's just another question that's been brought up. And I'm not being negative, I'm just throwing out questions that we're asked, and we have to have answers to the public for these questions, and the only place we can get the answers is from you people. And that was the object of this meeting today. Commissioner, Chairman, are you approaching a conclusion to this?
Because I will tell you, and I, I just say this, first of all, I think it's been wonderful dialogue, your questions are well thought out, we share those questions with you. We all want the same, a return to school, in-person instruction, but we also have to follow the governor's order and the protocols for health and safety. And I believe our transition to B and then addressing A for elementary will do that. So I ask you patience, understanding, there are also complexities in going from B to A, and it's something we have to discuss as a board, and everything, what Dr. Doyle said, class size, masks, especially for small children who wear a mask, and also our exceptional children as we address their needs. I also put quarantine and the impact of substitutes, classroom, and teaching, all of those will give us an answer. As we address B going to A, we'll have those answers. Again, I'll say, we all want the same, it's how we get there and when we get there, and we will work with you, to share with you as we progress forward. Vice Chairman? Can we have, give Mr. Ippok a chance? I want each of the board members to comment as appropriate or if appropriate. While we're at the virtual, either of you, Ms. Clark, Ms. Smith, have something you'd like to comment on or say?
I would just like to, to thank them for allowing Dr. Doyle to give the presentation, and again, if it had gone first, it probably would have set an entirely different tone because it answered so many questions and concerns and just encouraged, I mean, all that information that she shared has been shared at our board meetings, and so, I would love for people to tune into our board meetings as we move forward, or listen to the tapes, or however we can make that available to everyone, because it's good information, it's not that we're not sharing it, it's, it's great information, and we want everybody to have it. I love when Mr. Leiner picks up the phone and calls me and asks me for a question when somebody does. I love when a commissioner refers a concern to me so that I can answer it. And so, you know, moving forward, you know, help you guys by having them, having them call us and, and taking some of that off of you. You guys have a big job to do as well, so thank you for, for listening to us and bearing considerations as, as we bear with everybody as we move forward.
Ms. Hale, can you ask Dr. Doyle to address the concerns that Commissioner McCabe raised about interconnectivity, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, and, and he and I spoke outside. I told him that I was going to look into the issue at the fire station specifically. I do know that we're supporting five remote learning hubs in the southeastern end of the county, and we had not received any concern specifically about the missing connectivity at the fire station, so I've asked Mr. Lee to look into that, and I will get a response back, both to Commissioner McCabe as well as to our board.
Mr. Ippok, can you hear us? Do you have anything?
Yes, yes. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. I'd like to thank Mr. Jones for singling out or speaking to what our teachers have been going through also. There is absolutely no question that this is the worst work we could ever call on them to do. They started back in March, and occasions were made since that time, but they did a phenomenal job then, I mean, on the fly, overnight, and it has gotten better. What hasn't gotten better, of course, is being able to reach every single student, which is the concern that we all share, realizing that it's also a tremendous impact on our families now and our parents that are, and others that are acting in that role of teaching and finding out how very difficult it is. There are a couple of things that we have been reminded as school board, and that is the idea of being virtual and having students that are in class in front of you and students that are virtual. Those are two different environments, and it is incredibly difficult. All over the state, we're hearing that teachers are just crying out for help, that, that does not work, that's kind of the worst combination of it all. So keeping these things in mind and having our discussions, and I invite certainly school, county commissioners to come to our meetings, they're all open, we have the discussion there in public, it's also on the, you know, being televised and, or broadcast so that you can join in, and many of the questions that you ask are the ones that we bring and have additional discussion about. But the focus, I think, primarily there at the school board table is always going to be on health, welfare, that health and welfare is going to include the learning, certainly our students and our faculty. And we have to take all the information that we have. Thank you, Scott Erleson, for coming and presenting and keeping us up to date with that connection. There are many aspects to this, the things that people don't know that are going on, the work that our SROs are doing, just the hidden things that are going on across the system to try, all of us working together to lift up in a bad situation. I know we'll get through this, and my belief is that we will never go back to being exactly the same in how we communicate and relate and hold meetings. Hopefully, more novelty would be a good thing, but there are many learnings that will also benefit our students and our families and our population. So I just look forward to being able to see that bright daylight coming.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say that in this, in these difficult times, I'm glad that we have a, I feel, a fairly good working relationship that we can get together and go over these things and try to work them out for the benefit of the, the students and the community. And I do appreciate that we have worked with the commissioners in the past, and you have, I think, supported the Board of Education in a, in a good way. You have not been able to give us all that we feel we have needed, but you've been there to give us what you could, considering the... to give us what you could, considering that there are other responsibilities in the county as well. But I think that there are times that we need to sit down together and have conversations such as this, although we may not be always be comfortable with what's being said, but we have to discuss these things that are important for us to give boys and girls the best education that we can in Craven County.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Boomer. Dr. Doyle, do you have anything you'd like to add after this conversation?
No, thank you for your time this afternoon and morning.
Do I have any other questions on any of the questions?
I have a couple of comments to make. By sitting here, listening to Dr. Doyle's presentation and the Board of Education members, I feel that you have done a wonderful job, a community for that, along your staff, and we need to work together more and more, have more meetings to understand what you guys are going through. A lot of people don't understand that, I'm hearing lots of outside, but people outside don't know what's going on, a lot of hearsay. And in my district, my community, I haven't heard anybody say anything negative about the Board of Education. The only thing I have heard is about the internet. So I believe that's a good thing. And I think that the members of the Board of Education have done a wonderful job, no matter what you do, somebody may be happy. And it's neither about us, people talk about me, everybody, and I do my best I can. But if you're not in the boat, you don't have a motive. So I give you my heart, my praise, and everything that you guys are doing, community, Dr. Doyle, you're doing a wonderful job, especially with the COVID-19. It is hard for all of y'all to gain, do your work. People can criticize you no matter what you do, the way it is, but I expect y'all guys to keep on doing your work and do better, and as commissioners and y'all guys, we need to get together more and work together, have more meetings so we can understand y'all, and y'all can understand us. That's what I just say, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCabe, and that's encouragement, we appreciate those words.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor to say aye?
Aye. On our side?
Ayes have it.